I'll call this regular council meeting of the Village of Grand Manan to order. It is 7:35 PM. And with us for prayer this evening is Pastor Dave Phillips.
Good to be with you again. So, uh... I'm substituting. I wasn't scheduled till later, but glad to be here. Let's pray. Lord, to take a moment to pause and give thanks for this day. Even though we had a lot of snow, it was a beautiful sunny day. And many days are beautiful here. And we just take time to pray your blessings upon this meeting this evening. I pray that you would be with each of the counselors and with the staff that work on our behalf as residents here on this island. We just are very grateful for all the many ways that things are done for us to enjoy life here on Grand Manan. So just may your hand guide us and in all the deliberations tonight, may you certainly give us great blessings for the days to come. We ask this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. I just have a couple of quick updates. We had our last regular meeting three weeks ago, so just a couple of things to talk about in that interim. One, this was posted on Facebook over the weekend, but just in case people aren't on social media, a little bit of an update on the medevac situation. Just so people are aware, this has been a continued priority for council. There has been ongoing communications with the province on this issue from December up until today. There's an indication that there could be a decision potentially this week. And we have continued to advocate that the best way to maintain the level of service that we have had on the island is to have a local-based operation. So hopefully, we'll have some sort of clarity around that issue in the coming days. And once we have something, we'll certainly pass that on. The other thing I just wanted to highlight was the funding project out at Swallowtail to refinish the tower and the house. We had a meeting with the Swallowtail Committee last week. They... The funding has gone a little bit slower, I think, than they anticipated. So they are looking at a telethon later on in April, and this has become a little bit more critical as they discovered water damage over the weekend. So just a little reminder that that fundraising is still going on. We're going to look ourselves to see what we can do over the next month or so and hopefully be able to contribute something to that as well. So with that, we'll move on to the agenda. And item number four is disclosure of conflict of interest. Hearing nothing, we have adoption of the minutes. We had a regular council meeting on February 6th and a special meeting on February 16th. Would anybody like to move to accept those minutes?
I will move to accept the minutes of the last two council meetings.
You heard the motion from Counselor Boyd. Do we have a secondary? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Addition to the agenda. Before we get into additions, I have two small changes under 16-1 and 16-2. They should read bylaw number 58-23 and 59-23. If we could just make that change. I also have three additions. One, under old business, it's an update on the Irving Oil Properties. That was from the February 6th meeting. Under 14-6, which is new business, I'd like to add service agreement for dangerous and unsightly premises. And there is another invoice to pay under 17-1, the general operating fund. Michael Green Electrical for the outside lights at the arena for $2,290.80. Does anybody else have additions? Would anybody like to move those additions? And I know that was a couple of things really quickly, but... You heard the motion from Counselor Greenlaw. Do we have a secondary? Seconded by Counselor Boyd. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Which brings us right up to number seven, which is the RCMP report. You're on again.
Good evening. I'm Constable Stephanie Ditt. For anybody that doesn't know me, Corporal Stewart apologizes. He couldn't be here today. He was off. So basically, I'll just run... We don't have too much. Just run through a few new things that are going on. So the files from February of 2023, we have 35 files so far. 2022 is 39 files, so pretty much on par with 2022. Eight files were cleared by charge, which is... Or charges recommended, which is 22% of the total files, but a lot of them were traffic charges and offenses and tickets. A little bit of a breakdown. There was two assaults, one break and enter, one failed to comply with conditions, with charges laid and conviction. Five frauds, one mental health act, two child welfare calls, three mischiefs, two thefts, three collisions, traffic collisions. And then nine other were traffic reports and tickets. Did have an arson. I'm sure people have heard. There's been a media release done on that, looking for any information from the public in regards to that. I know it's still under investigation. I'm speaking with the member that's investigating that today, and he's still... It's very active investigation still, so... We do have a new member that started recently, Constable Mark Wright. I'm sure some people have heard. He's pretty excited to be back in New Brunswick, and he's really happy to be here. I know it was Corporal Stewart had sent in that we'll try and have him attend a council meeting in the future so everybody can kind of meet him and have a chat. The one note on here is that RCMP has been working on getting a MOU put in place with Coastal Transport. So an official letter was sent to Coastal Transport from the Director of Marine Services requesting priority access to the ferry for emergency vehicles, and they're just now waiting for a response. So I guess as soon as we have that, or maybe by next one, next council meeting, I'm not sure. So, but yeah, that's about it. Anybody have any questions?
Questions? I have more of a comment. We have quarterly meetings with DTI and Coastal Transport. And I think our next one is in April, so if you're still waiting on the MOU at the next month's meeting, a little reminder, and we'll put it on the agenda for them just to have that conversation.
Sure. I'll just write down here that it's in April. Perfect. That's great.
Anybody else have questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
So that moves us up to old business 9-1, which is Irving Oil Properties, which I believe is the CEO, Rayner, to address.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No real movement on that. After Counselor Leighton had brought that up, the staff did reach out to Irving, and they basically said that any activity on any Irving property that you see is without their permission. And according to this gentleman, that includes Canada Post. So he did say we could reach out to Canada Post, seeing how they're there to see if they would maintain it. The contact for Canada Post for Grand Manan is Marcie?
Marcia.
Marcia. She's on vacation. So when she gets back, we will reach out to her to see if there's anything Canada Post can do. But we did say, so since everyone else is up there doing stuff without your permission, what would happen if we put a load of gravel down there? And he said probably nothing. So that's pretty much all we got out of him.
So you're saying we can just maybe go and fix those holes soon? Is that your... Is that where we're headed? Are we gonna fix all the holes in front of the mailboxes, I guess? We have the permission.
Yeah, no, we don't have permission as well as no one else, but we did inquire about the beautification program that they have, but that is only for active properties, not for ones that... The properties like we've got here that they've torn down, old service stations. So that's our update. But we'll check with Canada Post when she comes back from vacation and see if there's anything there that they'll do for their mailboxes. Unless there's something else you want us to do.
All right. So item number 10 is the 10-minute open session. Seeing no one, that will move us down to correspondence, which is 13-1 Anglophone School District. The turnaround awards, and there's a letter in everybody's package that I am... Thank you. I'm able to find on my laptop, apparently. So the turnaround awards recognize two students from Grand Manan Community School, one from high school and one from middle school. The cost per student is approximately $200. Once you factor in the cost of the meal, their awards and other miscellaneous, and having the expenses covered would allow the monies to ensure that they could provide students and their families an evening they will fondly remember. I believe Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons attended on our behalf last year, and I think we donated 200 for each student is how we did it, one for middle school and one for high school. I don't know what the wishes of the group are, but I'd open the floor for discussion. Counselor Boyd?
I would move that the Council of Grand Manan match what we did last year.
You heard the motion from Counselor Boyd. Do we have a secondary? Seconded by Counsel... Seconded by Counselor Toll, because I think she was a little bit louder on that one. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. New business is the Planning Advisory Committee members. CEO Rayner to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a vacancy... Another vacancy on our PAC committee. Unfortunately, due to timing, we weren't able to add that individual last month, or I guess this month at the last regular meeting. But since then, we've had the resignation from our actor... From our Chair, Sherman Ross, who is now our building inspector. So that leaves us with one open spot, and we have Michael Monroe interested in that position. So I would like to add Mike Monroe to the PAC.
Would someone like to make that a motion? Counselor Green?
Sure. I'd move that we add Mike Monroe to the PAC and his term to begin now and terminate on January 1st, 2024. That's when Sherman's... End of motion. That's when Sherman would have... His term would have expired, and that keeps two people terminating every year. Keeps it flowing.
You heard the motion from Counselor Green. Do we have a secondary?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor Brown. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 14-2 is New Brunswick Lyme Disease Association for Lyme Awareness Month. May is Lyme Awareness Month, and there's a letter in your package. I actually have that one, thankfully. So they're asking if we would recognize May as Lyme Awareness Month. I think that in the past, what we've done is just make an acknowledgement on the sign and on our Facebook page, maybe. So wondering what the thoughts are on that one.
We don't have a fountain or anything between them?
No, and I'm thinking, as cold as it is building, a fountain between now and May might be a bit of a challenge, so... Questions? Comments? Would you like to make that a motion?
I'll make that a motion. That we acknowledge that we acknowledge May as New Brunswick Lyme Awareness Month.
You heard the motion from Counselor Greenlaw. Do we have a secondary? Seconded by Counselor Turner. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 14-3 is transfer station update. CEO Rayner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you all know, at the last regular meeting, we accepted the resignation of Island Waste and Recycling at the end of March. So since then, we have prepared a RFP. That RFP was put up on Opportunities New Brunswick on Friday. And I had circulated it to everyone, a kind of a copy of the RFP for everyone to look at. And I believe Counselor Leighton had a few questions with regards to that, so...
Thank you. I guess my position on the whole redemption thing is we're doing... We've been doing the same thing. We hire an operator. They come in, they do their service, they leave usually on bad terms. Just putting this out again, it's not... I don't... I think we're really behind on the cycling part. As far as New Brunswick as a whole, our community is way behind. I visited Sussex Transfer Station last week. I had a tour event. I met the lady that runs it, Andrea Davis-Hordland. Anyway, I asked her. She gave me a great tour of the place. I wouldn't say it was a better facility. I think it's better managed, it's better organized, but I think we have a better facility than they do. They operate it with five people. Their only equipment is a backhoe and a cherry picker. That's the only equipment that they have. I asked her what her qualifications were, you know, like, how did you get this job? She said, "Well, I have a passion for recycling." The village council, her council at the time, put out a request to hire somebody. She put her name in. She used to work for Scotiabank, but she's brought that place up to standard. I mean, they do more than... More than they're expected to. She said, "Everything that comes into the transfer station, there's a program for it to recycle it." And I understand Tricia's committee. I respect all the work you guys done, and it seems to me you guys have been, like, putting out fires, not really bringing the transfer station head, because there's so much back issues that, like, just things that have... I don't agree with any operator coming in here and doing this service anymore. I think... I think we should hire somebody within our community that can be a director of solid waste. They'll go in, they'll work for... Under the CAO, but they can provide the same service that we're getting now. We can... I believe we can save money. I think we can do it better. I think we should be sorting our garbage at our homes. I don't think we should just throw everything in a garbage bag and take the dump, and we pay trucking. There, if you take a black garbage bag into their CNSA site, they're going through it, and you're gonna pay a premium rate. There's scales. Everybody drives over the scales when they go in that site. I don't agree with paying, charging people for dumping their household garbage. I don't think that's something the community wants, but I believe commercial garbage and all the big players in that that we do for now, I think they should pay a premium per ton, right? And I just don't want to keep going down the same road. I'd like to see somebody take on the management of the... The Redemption Center and make it a profitable thing, or not for profit, but I think there's lots of efficiencies that can be made, and I think it's time that Grand Manan needs to get on board. In the solid waste disposal business of New Brunswick, we are the laughingstock of New Brunswick, because we've got ourselves in such a mess, and we don't... We're not good stories. And I just think that we can do better. Instead of just hiring another operator, I think we should just step back and look at other options, at least, I guess, is my opinion. And that's just my opinion, but thank you for having my say, I guess.
I will say with that RFP that it was very clearly written that we're in the position where we don't have to accept any bid, not just the lowest, any bid at all. So, I mean, we're going to align ourselves in a position so if tenders come in extremely high and way over budget from what we've got budgeted and what we've used to in the past, that we will align ourselves in a position to go a different route.
I think Counselor Toll wants to say something.
I agree with you in certain ways, Jordy, I do. I know that we are behind on a lot of things here. I also know federally, they have been mandating new programs, which I know Recycle New Brunswick has been working with, to put out programs that have to be mandated and will be mandated. They were supposed to be done by now, but they are not. And until they are mandated, you can't force anybody to sort it home or to separate or bring. So we need to clean up what we have right now that we have to clean up, and it is in the process. And they are saying by April that we should have something coming down that will help us out, which will also put into place how we have to do it, the space we need to do it, if we need to get more space, how it can be set up, and how we can clean it up to get it done. It is being done. But it also has to be done by homeowners, right? I mean, I recycle everything. I sort, I compost, I digest, I sort, I flatten garbage. I take one green garbage bag every three weeks to the dump. So it can be done, but we have to teach how to do it. And it has to be... There has to be programs out there that we can either have meetings with the community, get together with them, get schools involved, get everybody involved in doing it. It's coming, but it's not fast. It's government. It takes time, and they have to send out the paperwork that says... I've been trying to get them to get rid of plastic bags here for a year, but because it's not a provincial mandate, they don't have to do it if they don't want to do it. And I think AMET doing it has made everybody else aware here, too, that they need to start. So it is coming, and I agree. I don't know if we're ready to manage it. We would have to find employees, and I know what that's like right now, trying to find employees. The people that are there, the two that would be there if they stay, are not going to be able to handle what has to be done.
No, I agree, but, I mean, whoever the service provider is gonna be, they're gonna hire somebody, so why...
Well, I think a lot of the service providers that might... Who knows who's gonna ask, but they may have their own employees, too, that they can bring in to help out while they're getting things ready.
I just don't... Like, what we got on the table now, the contract, I mean, there's nothing in there for recycling, and if somebody takes the contract for three years, there's nothing...
I think there was... Was there not something mentioned in there about they have to keep up with the recycling that comes into, like, they have to...
I think that there's an option in there to add on programs.
Yeah, so there is something in there about that, how they have to keep up with whatever's mandated and how to change it and upgrade it to... With our help.
And I think, though, part... The other part of the motion when we went out for the RFP was we were also looking at what the cost of doing it internally ourselves will be. So we'll be able to compare the two once the tenders are here to open. And I think I agree with both of you. I mean, there's a lot that needs to be done on the file, but it's not... It's gonna take time. And so I think that that's all we can do, is try to work towards achieving some of those things. But we've been sidelined with some of the other challenges up the road, and I think that that's put things on a bit of a detour. So I see Counselor Turner leaning forward like she wants to say something.
Yeah. When we... When I went to Sussex and did the tour, they were doing... Yes, really. They were doing the wet and dry. Are they still doing that? And see, it all depended on where you have to take your garbage, too. And the facility, I think theirs was in Moncton or near Moncton, had the capacity for that. Ours at Hemlock Knoll does not. So it depends on where our garbage has to go, what they can handle as well. So we are restricted, so maybe it's something we need to push the RSC on to have more options.
And there is recycling through the RSC, which we talked about last spring in the Solid Waste Committee. But to participate in their recycling program, it's an extra $20 a ton. So the amount that we would have to divert from going to the landfill towards recycling, it becomes very pricey to recycle. I think it's worth going back and looking at the numbers again at some point, just to see what those options are, but we also have to have the space to sort it as well. So I see several people have leaned forward with their hands, so I'm just looking for a speakers list here before we all start jumping in. Or anybody else on this topic? Counselor Leighton?
I'd just like to say one more thing. I think it's... I don't think we should sit around and wait for the province to start this. I mean, all the other communities have initiated on their own. They didn't wait for the province to step in. I mean, you can't make somebody separate their garbage. You can charge them a premium if they don't. I think we... I think it's in our hands. I think we make the decisions on where our garbage goes and how we dispose of it. And I think... I think it should change than the... Just the common, normal 20 years we've been doing this, and 20 years later, we're still gonna be doing it if we don't make some changes.
Counselor Toll, last word.
Yes, my last word is it's coming. Change is coming. There will probably end up being fees. There will be having sorted. You will be only allowed to bring certain things. They have to be sorted to bring them. We're not gonna be able to spend time doing it, but there will be changes, but it's not a fast thing. And we need to get the money as well so that we can do it. So I feel that we need to wait and see what they're gonna offer us to help us do this, too.
And that was in April, you said?
That we had that meeting. I was talking to the girl, I can't remember her name, last month, and she said that it was supposed to be done by January. It's now looking like it's gonna be April before, because it all has to be approved and has to go through probably half a million people and have to OK it before. I'm exaggerating probably there, but I do think... But I think we need to go about this, too, in a smart way so that nobody's feeling like they're being forced into things either. So we need to start maybe with a little bit... I know Sonia was gonna come back over in the spring, and we were gonna try and have some public meetings where we could show people how to make their own compost bins, how to sort, what they need to sort, how they can lessen their weight in our truck that goes away. So that if we can start by doing that, and then we can build from there. That's my last word then, because we need to go home tonight.
My last word on that, or do you want the last word?
No, you can have the last word. It's just... Just real quick. So with that RFP, it was a very quick turnaround, because we've got a March 31st deadline that we're working against. So our goal was to have it resolved and whoever's gonna be looking after it in place by April 1. So we've got a site visit next week for anyone interested in coming to do the tour, and the tender closes, I believe, on Tuesday, the 14th, at noon. We'll reveal the tenders then, so...
And my last word will be on the recycling piece of it. Whatever we can do to reduce how much we're sending to the solid waste facility is that much less we're paying for it. So I think that that's the bottom line, is it is in everybody's best interest to cut down on that, those amounts. So who knew we'd get all this fired up about talking about garbage? It's a good night. 14-4, application for donation for Curl for Charlotte County Cancer Society.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in your package, you'll notice there is an application there from Dicky Morgan asking for $200 towards the Curl for Cancer.
Everybody has the application. Counselor Green, you're leaning forward.
Muscle tick. I would move that we donate $200 to Curl for Cancer.
Heard the motion from Counselor Green. Do we have a secondary? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 14-5, Victoria Park Swimming Pool Update. CEO Rayner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It seems like this is my night. So the Victoria Park Swimming Pool has been on the radar, I think, since this new council has brought in. And because of all these fires that we've been putting out for the last year or so, it seems like it keeps getting pushed to the side and then brought back to surface, then pushed to the side. So we're really trying to make a stab at it right now. So there was an application that went in. We do have a commitment from Akowa, conversations with our MLA and RDC. It sounds like the 2023 money has dried up. They were encouraging us to look at 2024. The money that we have from Akowa has to be spent in 2023, so we're looking at a way to possibly do the splash pad portion of our pool project first, to take advantage of the money that we've been given. I had a conversation with Jim from Trace to see if that was possible. He has... if that was possible. He has agreed that it is. He checked with the designers in the pool, in the splash pad people. So, I've got an application pretty much filled out on my computer now to send in, and my argument to our MLA was, if we have to wait to 2024 for this pool, which everyone has been kind of waiting for, it will make it a lot more palatable to the public if we can reveal a nice new splash pad in 2023 first, and say, stay tuned in 2024. So, we've still got to go through some, some funding hoops to see whether or not they'll allow us to, to separate the two projects. On one hand, they were asking us to, to apply for the whole, for the big picture, which is a little bit over $1 million. If we do that, we forego the money that we've got right now for ACOA, so I'm just kind of working through that. But I just wanted to bring everyone up to date and see, I guess, get everyone's blessing that if it works out that way, that everyone would like us to see, just kind of do this in two phases, if at all possible, if it means making some type of a headway for 2023.
Questions or comments? Counselor Greenlaw?
Does splitting it into two portions affect the cost overall?
It does not. No change in cost. That was like the second question I asked. One, can we do it? Second, does it change the cost?
Counselor Boyd, and then Counselor Turner.
In conversations with our MLA, was there any discussion into this additional funding the province received from the federal government for capital projects?
Her response to me was, right now, with the, normally, we go for thirds, you know, 33% feds, province, and municipality through that bilateral agreement. In 2023, there is way more asked than there is money for. So, we stand a lot better chance, and they were encouraging us to do it for 2024. That was the last conversation I had with her.
Counselor Turner?
Would the money from ACOA cover the splash pad with what, I don't know what else we have towards that, if there's been fundraising and all of that?
It won't. We had a conversation with Emma Stafford. You know, Emma came in and gave us that presentation way back when. So, we've been working with Emma. Jim has, from Trace, has talked to Emma. They've come up with what everyone feels is a, is a nice design, a lot more kid user-friendly than more so the bells and whistles that looks nice to, to the people driving by. The Splash Pad Committee was basically kind of giving the go-ahead to start the fundraising. They would like to wait until after everything else is wrapped up, like the school sports and hockey and all that stuff, and start somewhere in the March-April range. The ACOA money, with the money that we receive from them, would pretty much be their third. So, we would still be looking for two-thirds. I think I can get RDC to cover, which would be their third, as part of the overall application. So, that leaves the municipal, between the municipality and the fundraising committee with the other third. As everyone knows, in our budget, we allocated money for 2023 to operate the pool. So, we do have some money in there that we could use to go towards the capital of the splash pad for 2023, if we're not going to be doing anything with the pool till 2024.
Counselor Green?
My memory of this is that the splash pad was going to share infrastructure with the pool as for water source and filtration and all that. Does that pose?
The initial, the initial design was to share. The splash pad designers discouraged that. So, it would be two standalone systems. So, underneath the actual splash pad, there is a reservoir and a basin, and it's on a separate research. So, they are able to do the splash pad as a standalone for Phase 1. Now, Phase 2, which is, the pool is the main, the main part of that, but it also, if you can remember, was a complete upgrade to the washroom and change facility. So, that would come in Phase 2 as well.
Counselor Brown?
I'm just wondering, what is the cost difference? Like, what percentage is the pool compared to the splash pad?
It's, the splash pad, I think, is 279, and I think the pool is right around $1 million.
Anyone else? So, I guess the question is, is there general support for breaking into two projects if we don't impact funding for 2024? Or do we want to push ahead at an increased cost to us, or wait and see if we can get the money? I guess that's really what it comes down to.
So, what you're saying, Chris, is if we put an application in for 2024 for all of it, we lose anything we get, or anything we were going to have for 2023?
If we don't do the project until 2024, we have to spend the money that ACOA has committed in 2023. So, if we don't do the project until 2024, we lose that money. Now, we can reapply, but the money that they have allocated to it, which is $100,000, we lose. So, I'm trying to figure out a way how to take advantage of the gift that they're giving us, and apply in 2024 to fund Phase 2.
Yeah, no, well, I certainly, I'd like to see it all done, obviously. I'd like to have seen it all done two years ago. But personally, I'd like to see something done. If we can, we can, like I say, if we make inroads, as you said, here's what we can give you for 2023. Stay tuned for the remainder of the project for 2024. So, that would certainly be my opinion, but I'm just one around the table here, so.
Well, that was the first thing we thought of when it sounded like funding had dried up, was how do we put something out in 2023? So, that's when I went right to the MLA and said, listen, we've got this. Is there any way that we can, you know, throw the carrot out first and, and bring the big picture in next year? I think it'd be a lot more, a lot more palatable to the, to the community, so.
Anyone else? Is anyone in opposition to this concept, Counselor Boyd? Sorry.
Sorry, not in opposition. Do we need a motion for that, or are you just, you're just kind of cruising now?
No, I wanted to bring everyone up to speed and make sure everyone was, was kind of in agreement with, if, if it looks like we have to go that route, that that's the way that we can go. I mean, obviously, we'd like to have the whole thing done this year, if possible. It's not standing that way. So, if we have to do the splash pad first this year, followed by the pool and the new washrooms and stuff in 2024, then.
I'm sensing consensus around the tables, so we'll proceed down that route and hopefully be able to do something. 14-6 is the service agreement for Dangerous and Unsightly, and you're still talking.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I believe everyone in their box, when they picked up their package, received a photo of a property that's in need of repair. That came in a while back, and I did have the discussion with our new building and planning people. Come to find out, the Dangerous and Unsightly premises is an actual bylaw, so we have to have bylaw enforcement. Manzur used to do this on our behalf. The RSC has indicated that they would, if we would want them to, or, in Eastern Charlotte, I believe, they appointed their CAO to be the intern bylaw enforcement for the Dangerous and Unsightly premises bylaw. So, I did reach out to the RSC just to see what that would be. They would, like I said, they would be interested. It would be on an as-needed basis. We get very few of these a year. I think since I've been sitting here, I think we've had like three. None of them have ever gone the whole way. It's a very long, frustrating property, especially if, if you're a neighbor dealing with, with the issue that's brought it up. So, anyway, it's, it's a very reasonable fee. I'll just give you an idea of what the fees are. So, to, the way the fee structure is broken down is, one, communicating with the property owner on the village's behalf with regards to complying to the Dangerous and Unsightly premises bylaw, no charge for that. For them to prepare, registering, and serving the notices to comply, they would charge a fee of $300. And to organize, prepare, presentation of documents for Dangerous and Unsightly Premises Enforcement by Law to appeal of counsel and/or court proceedings by the Service in New Brunswick, Southwest New Brunswick Service Commission, bylaw enforcement appointment officer would be another $300. There's an $85 filing fee in there. So, basically, for between $600 and $700 would get us through one unsightly. So, Plan B would be to appoint someone to do that. They did say that they would, they would help kind of walk us through what that would be. But I think for no more money than they're looking to charge, and for no more unsafe and unsightly premises that we get in the run of a year, that this looks like a very reasonable, very reasonable offer. So, they did, so Alex Henderson did send over kind of a draft. It looks almost identical to our other service agreement, but it's just a name change for, for Dangerous and Unsightly Premises bylaw. I did send it off to legal for review. There was no issues, because they just get through reviewing the other agreement. So, I guess, depending what the wish is, I would like to see, hire the RSC to do on an as-needed basis our Dangerous and Unsightly Premises bylaw enforcement.
Question or comments? Counselor Turner, then Counselor Green?
My concern is with this particular property, it's actually dangerous, because there are at least five small kids within two yards of that. And the back door is wide open, like those kids can access that property. And, I mean, kids are curious. I just think we really need to get it closed up, boarded up somehow with some kind of a dangerous property thing. Like, unsightly, yeah, I hate it, but dangerous is a whole nother level.
Counselor Green?
I'm assuming that's the same term, length of term, as the other contract. I will echo what some, what James has said. If, if it's dangerous, that we should work on it sooner rather than later. And we should have, I think, I'd move that we enter into this agreement with the RSC and have them attack that ASAP.
You heard the motion from Counselor Green. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question? All the, oh.
If you look at that property, and you read our bylaw, that doesn't meet the unsightly. Because under unsightly, you have to deal with, you know, car parts, you know, trash, rubble, stuff like that. So, it, just the hole in the roof doesn't, doesn't meet it. But certainly, the unsafe part does. So, that may be something we need to look at down the road as well with the, with the bylaw committee, but.
Any other comments? Counselor Greenlaw?
I think you'll find if you look behind that building, there's a massive pile of garbage that would not be seen from the road, but would be an unsightly issue.
Any other comments on the motion? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. So, that brings us up to bylaws. So, there's two there, and I think maybe just a little bit of a disclaimer, that the motion in February was to amend the procedure bylaw, which is the first one. But in the process, the bylaw committee discovered there was also a mention of the number of counselors in the second bylaw that's there, that I'm not going to attempt to say the name of. So, there's two bylaws for the price of one, based on the last motion. So, I'll turn this over to Counselor Greenlaw.
Yes, so with bylaw number 40-04, a bylaw to replace bylaw number 696, for the municipality of Graham-Manan, respecting the procedure and organization of the Village of Graham-Manan. We're changing one definition, number four, to council means the village council of the municipality, consisting of a mayor and eight counselors as duly elected.
So, you heard the first reading by Counselor Greenlaw? And I believe we have a motion to accept the reading. I don't know why as many of these as we've done. I can never get this part of it straight. So, would somebody like to make a motion?
I would move to accept the first reading of this new bylaw.
You heard the motion from Counselor Boyd. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Turner. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carry. So, I believe Counselor Greenlaw will now do the second reading in title only.
Okay, second reading. Bylaw number 40-04, a bylaw to replace bylaw number 6-96, for the municipality of Graham-Manan, respecting the procedure and organization of the Village of Graham-Manan.
And we have a motion on the second reading as well? Yes? Heard the motion by Counselor Turner. Seconded by Counselor Boyd. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carry. So, then 16-2 is for bylaw number 59-23.
Okay, so 59 dash, sorry, I don't have that right in front of me. For 59-23, we're just removing the composition of the council from that bylaw, because it has no application in it. So, 59-23, bylaw to amend bylaw 57-22, a bylaw of the Village of Graham-Manan, respecting the remuneration of the mayor and counselors.
So, I'm looking for a motion to accept that bylaw amendment?
I will make a motion to accept that amendment.
Heard the motion from Counselor Tole. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Green. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Counselor Greenlaw, second reading.
Reading. Bylaw number 59-23, bylaw to amend bylaw 57-22, a bylaw of the Village of Graham-Manan, Village of Graham-Manan, and the remuneration of the mayor and counselors.
So, so now, second motion for the second reading.
I will make that motion.
You heard the motion from Counselor Tole? Seconded by Counselor Boyd. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. I didn't have to say that word, which I'm very grateful for. So, moving on, 17 is approval to pay the following invoices. 17-1, from the General Operating Fund. From Silk Stevens, for the new contract for the transfer station, $2,001.18. For Silk Stevens, for the new contract for the transfer station, $1,903.37. Fit Works Equipment, for equipment and repairs, for $1,902.10. Michael Green Electrical, for the heat pumps at Thrifties, $1,828.50. Eastern Charlotte Waterways Insurance, that's for the electric car, for $5,000. AJW Mechanical, for heating units, $13,258.79. Urquhart Quality Homes, for pavilion material, $10,050. Urquhart Quality Homes, for pavilion materials, $16,349.86. And Michael Green Electrical, for the outside. And Michael Green Electrical for the outside lights at the arena for $2,290.80.
Let me make a motion to approve paying these invoices of the General Operating Fund?
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Question?
For the pavilion, that's money in, money out, right? Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. And then 17-2, to pay from the General Capital Fund for Coastal Enterprises for the ditching project, $103,225.82.
Let me make a motion to pay this of the General Capital Fund?
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Turner. Question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carry. Number 18 is closed session. We have two items. One is a property financial for the Graham-Manan Library, and the second is for personnel for salaries.
I will make a motion to go into closed session.
Heard the motion from Counselor Toll. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. I'll call this regular council meeting back to order from closed session. In closed session, we talked about two items. The first was property financial for the Graham-Manan Library, and we're going to follow up and try to set up a, a meeting with the library and the architects, so we'll hopefully have details on that for the next meeting. The second issue was on personnel salaries, and there will be an update on that at the April meeting after some review and comparison. So with that being said, that brings us to the conclusion of this meeting. Our next regular council meeting will be here on April 3 at 7:30 PM.
Let me make a motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.